indicators that we'll be taking that up at a future date. However, we will call to order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Can we have a roll call for the city council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
And could we have a roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
And we have your report.
Agenda for the November 3, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, October 29, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lamzaffane.
Want to read it in the record?
Sure. Item one on this agenda is Director of Public Works and Development Services regarding Grandview Avenue and Sonora Avenue at grade railroad crossing improvements. One A is council motion authorizing an increase in the contract contingency amount for an additional $160,000 with ACOM for professional services for the design of the at-grade railroad crossing improvements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and redevelopment agency, this is an increase to a contract with ACOM to design the Grandview and Sonora railroad crossings. You had initially, the city council had entered into a contract with ACOM, formerly Dim Jim Harris, to do this work, and as we've gone through the design process, we have found some additional work that was not contemplated. It is detailed in your report. We can go through it briefly, quickly if you like. Staff from Public Works Transportation is here as well. It is before the redevelopment agency and the city council because this project is being funded by the redevelopment agency. However, it is a city public works project, that's why it is the two of you today. If there are any questions, otherwise staff is recommending the increase.
Could you have a question?
And just to reiterate, these are, much of the work is safety. Safety issues complying with the latest in the sealed corridor safety technology that the Southern California Regional Railroad Association has promulgated. So, obviously, the intent, although they are at grade crossings, we didn't have the time or the money to separate the grade, but we've committed, I think this council, this agency, has committed to making them as safe as possible, using all the latest technology and gating systems and flashers and literally bells and whistles, so.
Mr. Weaver.
Having done my homework, I asked staff yesterday, whatever, to make it very clear in case we got criticized today for the $160,000 additional, that we are simply having to do this because of new standards from the Southern California Regional Authority. Adjustments on the alignment, adjustments on the grade, adjustments on the drainage, potholing, whatever. These are not city-driven. So, I want to make sure nobody stood up here and says, "Well, there goes the city again. Another $160,000 in change orders, why didn't we get it right to begin with?" We had no control over this. This came down from the rail system, and we have no choice to make it safe. We have to do this.
That is correct, Mr. Weaver, and following Mr. Najarian's comments, part of the change order comes from a change in the grade of the track, which means we needed to change the grade of the street so that we didn't have a high point the trucks or large vehicles would get caught on. So, it absolutely is a result of design features dictated to us in maintaining the safety of the crossings.
Yeah, we probably had the plans almost all done. What was it, at the 95%?
Some of them were 95%, others were close to 70.
Yeah, and then they, then the new, in the review, probably by the rail authority, they caught this and said, "Oh, no, we've got to have the new standards." We had no knowledge of it, so. It's one of those things, it's a safety issue we have to do.
Mr. Friedman.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're doing this. Anything we can do to make people safer, and I don't know if this is, this comment, it comes too late. I hope the train hasn't left the station, as they say. But it's something I've only become aware of. I'm glad I got at least one laugh out there. Thank you. Which is that this crossing is, that all of our railroad crossings are very difficult and dangerous for people on bikes. I've had a few emails from cyclists who have had wrecks trying to get over the train tracks because there's no little pad or way for bikes to get across them safely. So, hopefully, that's something that we can look into and maybe integrate to this order.
I'm seeing the staff from Transportation nod that yes, we will look into bikes, or if we have, maybe you can update.
Mr. Mayor, member, council member Friedman. Actually, right now for the-
Director, Mr. Cole, your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Wayne Cole from the Traffic and Transportation Division. Right now, without the sign of Flower Street, Grandview and Sonora, we already prepare for the width for future lane, bike lane striping.
It's not so much the bike lanes, it's the getting over the tracks that evidently there's some technologies that allow bikes to get across tracks more, you know, where they don't have to go over the bumps. Mr. Weaver, do you-
I know what you're saying. You know, the rail's sitting there, if there's a gap-
Yeah.
-between the asphalt and the rail, little dip, does there something go in there?
That is correct. Right now, actually, the latest design to use concrete panels, so the track is basically embedded in the concrete panel. So, number one, it's make it easier for vehicles to go through and also for bikes as well.
So, there's no gap?
I think we need to do something like that because people on bikes are, need to also be safe and protected, and if people are having wrecks on a train track, we could, that could really be a disaster.
That is correct, and I was surprised, actually, that a lot of bikers using Sonora.
Yes.
So-
A lot, so I think that before, we really need to do that now. I would hate to do all this work and then have to go back in a year and pull things out of the ground and put things back in. So, can we make that part of this order somehow or make sure that it happens with this-
Yes.
-work? Okay.
Is that in the flower?
Yes, it's flow as well.
Yeah, you have it booked.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
Next, that two is Director of Development Services Regarding Third Implementation Agreement to the 1998 ABC7 Owner Participation Agreement at Two A's Council Resolution Approving the Third Implementation Agreement and at Two B his Agency Resolution Approving Third Implementation Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and this chairman, members of the redevelopment agency. This is a follow-up to a June item that you took on. In June, we entered into an agreement with Clear Channel to allow five more years of a billboard on the freeway in exchange for the removal of 15 billboards throughout the city. As this action is now to amend an agreement we have with the Walt Disney Company to extend the enforcement of removing that freeway sign which allowed us to enter into the exchange. It is a follow-up item from what you did before. It is predicated on both the agency and Disney agreeing to extend that. We've had a great partnership with the Disney Company in this area in two developments. They have seen the benefit to the community of removing the billboards and have agreed to that. This is the item before you today.
Are there any comments? Okay, can I have a roll?
You want a motion?
Motion, please.
On Two A and B?
Second.
Two A for the council.
Second. Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Move Two B for the agency.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, could we have a roll call for the agency?
Agency members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Chairman Draymond.
Yes.
Next, please.
Three is Director of Administrative Services Finance Regarding Professional Services Agreement with Hindle Lighter de Lamas and Associates, Inc., Sales Tax Consultation, and with HDL Corn and Cone, Inc., Property Tax Consultation and Revenue Recovery through 2012, 2013. Three A is council motion approving professional services agreement with Hindle Lighter, I hope I'm pronouncing it right.
Columbus.
De Lamas and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $36,050 to be paid by the redevelopment agency, and with HDL Corn and Cone, Inc., in the amount of $86,050 to be paid by the redevelopment agency. At Three B is agency motion approving professional services agreement with the same, in the amount of $36,050 to be paid by the redevelopment agency, and with HDL Corn and Cone, Inc., in the amount of $86,050 also to be paid by the redevelopment agency.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Audrey Nasaian from our budget staff.
For a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman of the agency, members of the council, and members of the agency. Before you are the motions-
To give your name for the record.
Oh, sorry. My name is Audrey Nasaian, I work for the finance department. And before you are the issues for renewing the contracts with HDL Corn and Cone and Hindle Lighter de Lamas and Associates for sales tax and property tax consulting. HDL, the HDL companies provide consulting services to 335 local governments across California and are a critical resource to the city of Glendale for revenue forecasting for sales tax and property tax. So, we're asking that you approve the motion that's before you, the motions, and that we, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Need a motion for the council?
Here, I'll move Three A for the council.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Is there a motion for the agency, Mr. Weaver?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Could we call a roll for the agency?
Agency members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Chairman Draymond.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next.
At Four is Director of Planning and of Development Services Regarding Creation of a Downtown Entertainment District. At Four A is agency motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Lamzaffane.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council and redevelopment agency, some time back, you all had asked for a discussion to come back to you about the creation of an entertainment district within our downtown. To lead that discussion is our principal urban designer, Alan Loomis, and he now has some images for you to begin with.
That is actually what's out, that's what's out there right now.
No, no, no. Mr. Loomis, Glendale.
This question of a downtown entertainment district is an example that we know, as you're laughing, the granddaddy of all these entertainment districts we go to when we vacation in New York City. It's called Times Square. We're certainly not suggesting that Times Square is in any way appropriate for Glendale in terms of its scale or character, but it contains a range of uses and mixes that certainly drive the tourist trade in New York. Live stage theaters, the Broadway theaters, various restaurants, clubs, music clubs, et cetera. A number of other cities have smaller districts of similar character. Chicago has a theater district that's six live stage theaters, as well as hotels, restaurants, in a loop. Mr. Weaver?
Question. Since I've been, I've not to Chicago in a long time. Is that a pedestrian bridge over, or is that a restaurant?
I believe it's a pedestrian bridge, yes.
Pedestrian. Very unusual.
It is a pedestrian bridge.
Oh, I wouldn't know. Gets the traffic off the street, though.
Of course, they have to deal with winters, but in Austin, which considers itself the live music capital of America, Sixth Street is about, about four or five blocks of that are actually, is where all their music clubs are concentrated. In fact, they close the street down every single night to accommodate the crowds that come here. They also benefit from the University of Texas at Austin, which is one of the largest campuses in the country, right next door, but this is where all their music clubs are concentrated. More locally, we have the Sunset Strip in West Hollywood with its rocks, various rock clubs, The Whiskey, this is The Roxy, is a somewhat more locally known example of an entertainment district focused around music clubs. And downtown Los Angeles, the new Nokia Plaza is a very deliberate attempt to create an entertainment district in downtown focused around the Staples Center, the Nokia Theater, and other spinoff uses, as well as a hotel. And then a much more smaller example is probably more appropriately scaled for Glendale is in Culver City, which in many ways markets its entire downtown as an entertainment district anchored by the Kirk Douglas Theater, which in many ways is analogous to our Alex Theater that dates from the same time period, and I believe it's programmed in a somewhat similar fashion. So, these are some examples of entertainment districts in different cities. They have different characteristics, obviously, based on scale, as well as the kinds of uses they have there. Some of them have stage theater, small-scale stage theater, 99 seats. Jazz clubs, The Jazz Bakery was for many years tenant, anchor tenant in Culver City, but has recently moved, I believe they're moving to Santa Monica, Westwood. There are music clubs, some they may be independently owned, or they can be chains like the House of Blues, which is found in many of these entertainment districts on the Sunset Strip. And then there are a variety of kind of interesting new venues that are popping up. You might call them concept clubs. They sort of mix one kind of entertainment with bars and live music. There's some focused around bowling, like Lucky Strike Lanes, which is a very high-end bowling alley. There's an example in Hollywood and Highland. Down in LA Live, they've got the ESPN Zone, which is something of a sports bar plus sort of sports entertainment, where you can actually play a few games as well. The ArcLight Cinema and other kinds of art house cinemas is another kind of example use that you might find in an entertainment district. So, these are some examples. One of the questions today for the agencies and councils, part of this discussion, is to get a sense of what sort of entertainment district mix of uses makes sense for Glendale. The other question is sort of what location should we be focused on if we're going to focus on a particular location? In the past, two different locations have been suggested. One is Mid-Brand. The illustration shows Mid-Brand has a number of advantages that lend itself to such a district. The first is that the Alex Theater is on Mid-Brand and is clearly the anchor. There are a variety of other businesses already on Mid-Brand that have their own regional draw. For example, Jack's already functions in many ways as a kind of live music bar entertainment destination. So, Mid-Brand, which is the two blocks between Lexington and Wilson, could lend itself to such a district. One of the challenges on Mid-Brand is actually there's relatively few vacancies, so there's limited opportunities for new venues, such as the House of Blues or any of these other places, to come into. The other area that's been suggested is Maryland, between Wilson and Harvard down to the library. This street actually has a number of advantages. It has not quite, but sort of two anchors at the north end, and is the Alex Theater. At the south end is the Central Library, both functioning as kind of cultural anchors. Some adjustment, and as future development comes along, may be necessary so that actually both the Alex and the Central Library have doors that lead out onto Maryland. Maryland has some easy pedestrian connections through the various passages at the marketplace and the exchange to Brand, but because it's not Brand, if it gets dominated with nightclubs or theaters that are dark during the day, it doesn't disrupt the pedestrian vitality of our central Main Street. Also on Maryland, unfortunately, we have a number of vacancies on Maryland, and so the street is kind of primed for a kind of repositioning through kind of a creative retenanting of Maryland. So, these are two options to consider regarding the location of an entertainment district. Finally, there's just some concerns related to what an entertainment district might be. This image is of the Sunset Strip, I believe, on the website, it said it was at 4:20 a.m. So, there are, generate very intense activity into the evening, into the late evening, which is good, and we want that in our downtown. But the same buildings during the day can be, as I said, somewhat dead. This is The Roxy during the day. So, one of the questions that comes up, particularly thinking about Mid-Brand or even Maryland, is are these the kinds of uses we want to start populating on our streets and what would be the most appropriate street to do so? In fact, the downtown specific plan has some restrictions related to nightclubs on the ground floor because of this. That was based on the advice of the DSP Advisory Group. And so, depending on the agency, council's direction, some minor amendments to the downtown specific plan or some of the development agreements with the exchange and marketplace might be necessary. So, finally, I'll come back to the Alex Theater, which is clearly would be the anchor of a Glendale entertainment district in the downtown. And so, that we're here to get some of the agency and council's thoughts on this concept, and if you're interested in exploring it further, we'd come back with some further information. There are a variety of questions that come arise regarding this, so, thank you.
Mr. Draymond.
Okay. Mr. Loomis, let me ask you to guess, just guess, where you think my interest and support might be with regard to this.
Mr. Draymond, if I was to guess, I would guess you would do, it would be very interesting supporting the Alex Theater, however that is done. But to guess a street?
Well, that's true, but I was talking about a street.
A particular street?
Thinking of a street, starts with an M, ends with a D.
Can I flip a coin?
Mr. Mayor, council and agency, I tried to get this moving on the agenda some time ago with regard to Maryland, and fortunately or unfortunately, when it came forward, it was sort of the idea of looking at some of the zoning issues for this, all ended up being sort of packaged with a variety of looks at a variety of other geographic zoning questions on Central Colorado and other things, and most all of them, I think all but one, went down in flames, and this sort of went right along with it. So, when, and that was when I was chairing the agency at the time, when I became mayor, I asked that it be placed back on the agenda by itself so that we could have a more in-depth look at the idea of the exchange. The reason that I think Maryland is a better, more viable location for this than Mid-Brand is exactly what Mr. Loomis was addressing. The fact that typically entertainment districts are somewhat, have somewhat light traffic during the day. I don't think we can afford that in Mid-Brand with the mix of businesses, and you don't want to try to encourage a different use when you already have generally full occupancy. The other thing is, is that the exchange has parking structures, and that I don't think was mentioned, but I think that is a critical element, and it would allow the use of those parking structures somewhat, in a somewhat unfettered manner, during daytime business hours. And so, I think that is important as we grow other types of business in the downtown area. I think that this would be a natural complement to the Alex through, and with our passeos out to Brand Boulevard and Mid-Brand, where we have restaurants existing already, whether it's Jack's or Damon's or Carousel or any number of other restaurants that are, Farniente or any other number of restaurants that are already in existence, let alone the Americana and the Galleria. Lastly, the reason I am very anxious to see this bow out is because we need development in the city that relates to a younger demographic than some of what we have seen in the past. And this will address that. I think that that is important. I think it, we are, have a decidedly younger, growing demographic in this city, around this city, immediately adjacent to. I'd like to see Glendale not be an afterthought when people are making decisions as to where they're going to spend their entertainment dollars, if you will, so that they do not continually end up in Old Town Pasadena, or in Atwater Village, or in Los Villas, or in Silver Lake, that, or even at the CityWalk at Universal. That Glendale might actually be a place where someone would come, park their car, go to dinner, see a movie, stop and have a drink, listen to some music, and then head on home. So, and to be able to walk to do all of those things. So, anyway, the idea of an entertainment strip or district is not new even to Glendale. That was considered before, and I can remember years ago when, when the Alex was supposed to be the, the, sort of the end stop for an entertainment, an arts district along Brand, just south of the financial district. So, the concept is not new. The exchange is underutilized. It has also something, Mr. Loomis, it has some unique architecture that lends itself well to integrating late-night use with galleries and adjacent properties, at least one of which is owned by the city. That might be future opportunities even for some housing, to move a younger demographic into the downtown area that would then naturally make use of such entertainment and art venues. In fact, I greatly support a movement of housing inventory into the downtown that will be an answer to the population of young, single professionals, empty nesters even, and couples who like to live in a downtown, more urbanized setting, who want to make use of entertainment venues and art venues right in their own downtown. So, that's where, that's where my support goes, and I thank you.
Okay, for me, I think this is something that we have to do. I don't think we have the luxury of sort of waiting around. I think the exchange in Maryland, right to the marketplace, actually, needs help. The situation at this point is not looking good. There's been a tremendous draw away from this area and to the Americana. So, I think we have to do whatever we can to have those property owners and business owners prosper. And there are quite a few empty storefronts, and unfortunately, more on the way. I think the movie theaters in both the marketplace and the exchange are literally just going to be there a few more years, and then they're gone. So, we need to take the steps now to try to build up a different type of business environment and entertainment environment. And Brand itself, I just don't think it's particularly appropriate. I think these, this neighborhood off of Maryland, I think is a much better idea. I would actually like to extend the concept to the city-owned parking lot north of Wilson, next to the Alex, the side of the, the Panda and Parking Lot, let's call it. I'd like to extend it to there. I wouldn't want to just restrict it to the other side of the street. But I think this is very important. I think we need to move on it as quickly as possible, and then do everything we can to encourage the kind of entertainment districts that we've, that have been presented. And actually, there in Austin, what I found interesting was the second-floor nightclubs and music taking place. It wasn't always at ground level, it was actually on the second floor. So, anyway, I'm all for it. I think we need to do this. I think the property owners will be with us, and so will the business people, and hopefully it'll, it'll entice some new creative types to come to this area.
Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. I agree with what my colleagues have said. I think that in this economy, it's very important that we think outside the box and that we're proactive, and this is a very proactive plan, and it's something that's different than anything else that we have in Glendale right now. Builds on tenants that we already have on the Alex. I think it would be, it could be of great benefit. It also provides interesting amenities and things for people to do who live in Glendale. And I have heard from a lot of people that they feel that there's just nothing to do in Glendale at night, and it would be nice to have something that we can do around here. I do have a few concerns, and I also agree that Maryland is the place, not Brand, for all of the reasons that staff pointed out. CityWalk, I know, has had some problems in the past with fights, with gangs, that sort of thing. I do think we have a different demographic in Glendale, yet I do think as we develop this idea, that we have to have a plan for how we're going to deal with those sorts of concerns. I don't want to be alarmist, and I don't want anyone to get alarmed. I don't think that we're going to have big problems, but we have to find a way to anticipate that, and I don't know how to say this and how it can be done, but if there's a way of targeting, since this is redevelopment and we can go out and we can try to bring a Lucky Strikes or bring those sorts of businesses here, and by the way, I've been to Lucky Strikes, and it's, it's great fun, and I think it's, you know, it's a very nice establishment. But if there's a way that we can target sort of the classier establishments, rather than just wait for whoever wants you to come to us to identify the types of businesses we want and bring them in, because besides young people, we have a lot of people who work here who are white-collar workers, who work in, in office buildings, doing all kinds of things, post-production and film, and business, and banking, and all of that, and there's, that's the type of people who could also really use these, you know, so. If we target a slightly older demographic as well and make sure that it's not- a slightly older demographic as well, and make sure that it's not, you know, the type of thing where we're running into problems with underage kids, and that sort of thing. My other, my other concern, and I do think it's something we can handle, but I think we should go into it with our eyes wide open, is mixing a lot of venues that are serving a lot of alcohol into a city that has major traffic safety problems. So I think we need to work very closely with the police department to be sure that they help us develop programs with the merchants so that we don't, so that we anticipate any problems and end up not having those problems, because we have plans in place.
If I may?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address this, if I may. This is actually something that staff has already started working on in terms of ways to regulate the activities such that they will not, that would minimize any kind of negative impacts that might arise from entertainment activities. And our first step was really when we looked at the Americana at Brand, and at the time that we were looking at the permits for that, we spent days with the PD staff to come up with a structure that would work with 18 conditional use permits, all at the same time on the site. And that really gave us a very strong framework based on which we could develop further. In this case, we will not have one operator. We'll have multiple operators. And some of the ideas that we tossed around, but we didn't end up using at the Americana at Brand site, we still have those, and we can bring those further forward and work with those, and tailor the, the conditional use permits for each individual site so that we can really make sure that we have some ways of controlling the activities, and stepping in when things may not be appropriately handled.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that. And, you know, I do think that this is going to be a great thing, and I don't anticipate that we're going to be having these kinds of problems. But certainly going into it sort of with contingencies, I think will make everybody feel more comfortable.
Just to add to that, I also think that the local command structure that police has, if there is a downtown unit, will go far to this, as well as the BID, if it is established with its safe and clean component, would go far in helping regulate, along with the tools that Hassan talked about.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to address one thing. And I think it's important that we don't, to the extent that we, you know, we don't communicate out to the public. These are all things that, that obviously have to be addressed. But with regard to something that my colleague, Ms. Friedman, mentioned with regard to public safety, basically, that's the other reason why I support looking at the exchange, because it is rather encapsulated. And so, to the extent that we grow a, you know, a pool of attendance there, which we certainly would hope to do, it is encapsulated. It is a relatively small area. And so that's the other reason why Maryland is, would be my recommendation. And I think it's also just important to note, we're not talking about a red light district. We're talking about an entertainment district.
Not Times Square in the eighties.
Exactly.
Any other comment? Mr. Najarian?
Thanks for the presentation. There are, I mean, there's entertainment, and there's entertainment. There's the Kirk Douglas Theater. There's the Arc Light. And then there's, you know, Roxy at 4:00 AM on a Saturday night. I think, and I think each of us has different levels of comfort with the types of uses that we would envision. You know, we envision a polite crowd that's not getting in fights, or drinking in the middle of the street. I think it'd be helpful if, when you come back to us, we sort of go through the different laundry list of uses that, that are out there, potential uses, and just talk about them and see which ones we're, we're happy with. I mean, there's, there's Jack's, which has been a longtime entertainment venue. I think it's been a relatively benign establishment. On the other hand, there's been Giggles, where they've had a lot of fights. Minks, which is a, you know, a great club, but it sort of morphs into one of those, you know, hard drinking, I haven't even been there, but I know that there's a lot of fights. You know, you looked at My Girlfriend, and police make a lot of calls there. So, you know, laundry list, like, like we did when we looked through the zoning review on San Fernando Road as to the types of uses we're comfortable, what sort of uses would need CUPs, and just our general feel. I mean, I, I think we all have a pretty good feeling as to what we would accept, what we would envision for Maryland, or, you know, any other particular location that decides to pop up. And just go through it, and you can help us with what the pitfalls might be, or what works very good. And, you know, we'd like to, as long as we're starting from essentially a blank canvas here, I think it's a good opportunity to really fine tune what we, what we would like to see in the, in the neighborhood.
Okay, and yet, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with trying to do this. It's a question of how you get from here to there. Personally, I don't think a lot of this will happen in my lifetime. I do know back in the forties, Brand was the entertainment mecca, the Capital Theater, the Glendale Theater, the Alex Theater.
State.
State Theater, yeah, that's right. State Theater. The activity was on Brand, but that's also where you got, where you get kids' shoes, that's where the cafeterias were, that webs was. Everything was on Brand. And when, still remember when the Fashion Square, I think it's called, was put in, it pulled stuff off of Brand, and there was concern then, well, why is it not on Brand? That's where all the activity is. So, you know, we're evolving. That was a, Glendale was a small town back then. I think Brand has to have established establishments that are more open, more hours open. Like, one thing, I listened to on ESPN Sports, there are sports bars. If you have, if you have establishments on Brand, they do multiple, can open 10:00, 11:00 in the morning for lunches and, and sports. On weekends, they're open in the morning before the, the games, and they're doing all the analysis in there. And it goes clear into the evening hours. Fine, but I agree, the theater type don't belong on Brand with it boxed up. What makes you a little bit put on Brand, besides restaurants and theaters, I don't know. Right now, there is a immigration service right across from the Alex Theater with a wall up. Inappropriate. Doesn't belong there. Can't activate a wall. I get concerned on Maryland, too, because I, when I actually saw it in the report, I said, you've got to be kidding. It's never been a mecca for anything. You know, if you stand on, at the library, and you walk north on Maryland, one little shop on the left, then you hit the whole back wall of the marketplace. On the right, you have the Maryland Street Garage, until you get up to what was Circuit City. So how are you going to activate that? You're not going to activate the back of Marketplace. You're not going to activate the garage. So you've lost a good half block before you get to anything you can do. Exchange, 13 years sitting here, we've Mickey Mouse around, trying to find a way to activate that block. Parking is lousy. That design of the change, parking structure is simply terrible. We've tried to figure ways to get people in and out of it better. We've had the issues with the police and fire, whether to make it a one-way street, a two-way, left turns, right turns. There have been all kinds of little businesses in there. Moving stores, whatever, have gone out of business. Chewy's, next block up, is out. So it's, it's quiet. It's not conducive, yet. So if you're going to do anything, it's going to take a total makeover on Maryland. You go above Wilson, you have the Panda Inn site. We, okay, we own the whole site. We can do something with. The other side, that parking lot's owned by the church. Says in here, they do events on there. Never in my life I've seen the church do an event on that parking lot. And then you go up, and then there's commercial buildings on the right, the back of the Alex Theater, backs, backs, backs of things facing onto Brand. So it's going to take work. That's why I say it may not happen in my lifetime. But I do know, there's an old saying, if you build it, they will come. So if we can find a ways to activate, people will come. We're not just talking Glendale people. They'll come from all over the valley for an entertainment center. I've always believed that the entertainment sector is one we could go to to encourage people to come to Glendale. But it isn't going to happen overnight. Master plan it. It may take 10, 20, 30 years to actually make it happen. But you have to have a plan to work towards before you can make anything happen. So, yeah, give it a try. Let's deal with the pitfalls as they come along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the, we have one speaker, public comments, Barry McComb, Glendale Arts.
Oh, I should have listened to him first.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, and members of the agency and city council. I'm Barry McComb of Glendale Arts. And you've actually touched base on a lot of things that I wanted to address this afternoon. But obviously, Glendale Arts is an organization is strongly behind the formal creation of a downtown entertainment district. I had the pleasure of serving on the community committee when the downtown specific plan was originally brought together. And obviously, at that time, the entertainment district was primarily discussed along Brand. But I think it certainly makes sense, for many reasons, to have it on Maryland in a more condensed, defined area, primarily because it makes it easier for the businesses to joint market together and share audiences that complement each other. I think one demonstration of the value that that kind of a district would have is, we do shows now. They're over at 10 o'clock at night. People on the way out the door ask us, where's their club we can go to? Where's, there's something to do afterwards. And, you know, we certainly tell them about Jack's and places like that, but they get back in their car and obviously drive someplace else to spend the remainder of their evenings. So if there is a good complementary mix, I think we'll capture those people for a longer period of time, which obviously then will have a much more extensive economic impact. One, one of the speakers earlier today talked about that the council should be focusing on projects that create jobs. Entertainment entities, such as the types of businesses that should draw into this district, are very labor-heavy. In the case of the Alex Theater, more than half of our budget is payroll costs. So with a proper mix of businesses, you certainly will bring the kind of impact in job creation that some of your critics would like to see you do. If you've been reading the paper recently, you've probably noted that Glendale Arts is starting to look for additional venue space herself. One of the things we're looking for is a 99-seat black box theater locale, which probably would not make sense in this corridor. But we're also looking for a 200 to 300-seat concert hall, to where we can do more club-style acts that can't draw a big enough audience to perform at the Alex Theater. As we've been meeting with various property owners, and some of those locations do exist within this corridor, some of the concerns that obviously have represented themselves to us are zoning and parking, and other ordinances that are major hurdles to overcome. So again, if creating a district along Maryland is going to help us get past some of those big challenges, we're obviously for that as well. We realize that this is the, the first step of what's going to be a very long road, with probably the biggest challenge, this, the financial times we're in. National chains of venues, such as House of Blues and whatnot, are not exactly looking to expand at this time. But hopefully, by the time you complete your, your district parameters, times will be better. So we just encourage you to move forward with it, and applaud your efforts for recognizing the value that a development like this will bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Drayman?
All right, one thing, well, actually, a couple things. I'm going to end by making a motion. But I want to, I want to address something to Mr. Weaver, who raised some issues. And he also touched on the history of entertainment use in the city, and so on. Mr. Weaver, I'm going to make a bet with you right here, before Barry McComb, Hassan Hagani, city attorney, and our colleagues.
What's the wager?
It's not going to be 20 years, and it's going to be innovative work, and you're going to be a part of it.
It's going to be before you die.
It's going to be before you shuffle off this, this mortal coil, so.
I've got at least good 10.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
That's your comment?
Go ahead and make, go ahead and make the motion. I just have...
I, I wanted to make a motion, but I also want to, I, I think there will be some consensus here. So I, Mr. Hagani and Mr. Lanzafim, I would say that what you can also probably read, and my colleagues will certainly correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sensing the great hesitancy to start moving forward. So I don't know, as my family would say, don't stand on circumstance. Let's get rolling. And I want to echo one more thing that one of my colleagues said, and that's Mr. Najarian. The, the mix of what we're looking for would be critical. And the other thing is, it's going to require that we take the initiative to go and approach some of these entertainment entities in a proactive way. So that's, that is also a factor. The motion I'll make is to initiate...
It's an agency motion.
It is an agency motion?
You're out, you're out of it.
Then I will not make that motion.
I will.
But I would recommend, I would recommend a motion that, that includes, that includes directing staff to look at Maryland, the exchange in particular, and including...
For what area?
The, the area that includes the Panda Inn site that Mr. Quintero was mentioning.
In particular, but including everything within the boundaries of the map they gave us?
Yeah. And by the way, just to clarify one thing, Mr. Mayor, you and I were speaking earlier about the map that has Jack's Bar and Grill on it. It says vacant. They are still in business, and they're still there. And Mr. Hagani tells me that he thinks that that was a reference to what was badass coffee, which is not vacant, as I understand. It's been...
New ownership.
It's new ownership. It's a different business now. So...
Well, I'll make that motion, whatever it was.
And I'll second it.
And I just have a comment before you go to roll. Barry brought up a very good point with all the patrons who are flowing out of the Alex Theater. Why doesn't the Downtown Merchants Association prepare a little, either like a sandwich board, or a small handout, so people know that if they want Thai food, there's such a thing. The Americana is this way, the wine, Left Coast Wine Bar is around the corner. You know, the whole smorgasbord of what we do have, it's not, nothing to brag about, but, you know, maybe it's better than getting in the car and driving to Pasadena.
Well, Mr. Najarian, do you recall that some weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, I was mentioning a trip to Long Beach, and the downtown map that was put together in a brochure, and I gave a copy of that to, to Mr. Lanzafim. And I was asking why we don't have something like that. And that's exactly what you're talking about.
Good idea. And especially with all the patrons at the, at the Alex, out-of-towners, not necessarily familiar. Boom. You know, it builds the whole area. So, but I'm sure staff is working on that, Mr. Drayman.
The other, the other idea would be to join the 21st century, and like they have in Korea, have media polls, or touch, you touch screens, and they fill you in on restaurants, hotels, entertainment activities, et cetera.
Isn't one of our sister, sister cities in Korea bringing us one?
Right, wish. No, they're extensive.
You can't even work the parking meters, Mr. ...
Well, that's what made this, that's what made this so easy. All you had to do was touch the...
You see, you see, Mr. Lanzafim, Mr. Hagani, you bring this forward, and already, this agency is thinking outside the box.
Creative.
Being innovative.
The mayor got that idea for the push button out at the airport meeting, where they're going to put, actually, kiosk in the airport, so you can get up and touch buttons, and get a whole variety of information about the surrounding cities. So it's a good idea.
Bob Hope Airport?
Yes. Bob Hope Airport. And one other, that's common... And one other best comment, I was in Farniente, sorry, a big show, and the place was three, four, it's empty. He says, "Don't worry, the Alex Theater let out, we're going to have a mob scene in here." When they had let out, boy, people just flocking in, they were on an overload immediately. So they are looking for places after the theater where to go. And, but there was a lot of people walking down the street that were going to leave Glendale.
All right, we have a motion, do we have, did we have a second, Mr. [inaudible]?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Anything else staff wants to tell us? Mr. Loomis is approaching the microphone.
Just one thing in regards to the idea of the electronic information board, actually, that'd be one of the directions we'll be giving Hunt Design as they work on the wayfinding signs that you approved last week for them to start work on it.
Put one up at the Alex, put one at the Alex.
Absolutely. So we will be giving Hunt Design that direction to think about 21st Century wayfinding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loomis. All right, we have a motion and a second if there's no further discussion. Mr. Kasakian, if you could call the roll.
Agency members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Chairman Drayman?
With great pleasure, yes.
Are we adjourned for the council?
We are adjourned.
Second.
Who's adjourned for the agency?
Second.
Agency is adjourned. Thank you.